Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council on March 17th. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Banks.
Present.
Councilman Brightwell. Councilman Cruz.
Present.
Councilwoman Haynes.
Present.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilman Hicks.
Here.
Councilwoman Hoag.
Here.
Council President Mandelbaum.
Present.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible). To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We have a, some good presentations this evening, and we will get right into it. Our first presentation is by our Oakland County Treasurer talking about foreclosure prevention. Look, there's a, I brought a copy, and there's a copy here already, so you're very well prepared. Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see all of you back again, because this is how the tax cycle works every year. So, March 31st is the foreclosure deadline, and so I'm going to go through this PowerPoint presentation and talk about the work that we're doing in our office and how people at home can be helpful in this endeavor as well. So, let's get started. So, first thing, this is just overall, talks about the work that we're doing in our office. So, I don't need to go over the details, but there's a lot of work that's done in the office. We've got an amazing team here at the county, working closely with all of our local communities as well. So, I'll skip to the next. So, the tax foreclosure timeline, as I said, March 31st is the foreclosure deadline for any taxes three years and older, right? So, we're in 2025. If you owe 2022 and prior year taxes, you are subject to foreclosure this year on March 31st. So, the first year, taxes are turned over. So, your first year, your taxes are owed to the local community, so here in Southfield. So, like this year, in 2024, taxes got turned over to us on March 1st. So, if anyone hasn't paid their 2024 taxes yet, they will pay that to our office. They cannot come here to Southfield to pay their 2024 taxes. But, so this gives you kind of a, looking from the top, this is the 2021 tax year or 2024 foreclosure year, just to give you an idea. So, 41,465 parcels were turned over delinquent. So, that's all 63 cities, villages, and townships in Oakland County. We have more than any other county in the state. So, 41,000 was turned, were turned over. That 39,000 is the number of people that paid their taxes in full. After that is taxpayer repayment plan. So, that is, we worked with people to get them into repayment agreements, so they could have more time to pay their taxes, interest, and fees. And again, we cannot reduce your taxes. We cannot reduce your interest or your fees, but we can try to help you find grants, and we can try to help you have more time to pay those taxes. And then the foreclosed properties, the number was 244, but that, the real number is 131 at the bottom. We withheld properties for various reasons, but 131 was last year. So, the foreclosure happens at the county. So, the county is the foreclosing governmental unit, and after it's foreclosed, it is statute that the county sells the property at auction. So, last year, there were 131 parcels that went to auction. We do the auction online. That was the lowest number we've had in Oakland County, I should say, the second lowest number we've ever had in Oakland County. The year prior was the lowest we ever had. The year before, we had about 90 parcels that were foreclosed. The vast majority of parcels that are foreclosed are vacant. It's usually a vacant, vacant land or a vacant structure. So, and there's over half a million parcels in Oakland County. So, it's a big place. And, so just to give you an idea of Southfield specifically, so this is the 2023 foreclosure data. This is 2020 taxes, so that, you know, anyone that owed 2020 and prior year taxes, so the, well, I should say, the 2020 taxes. So, 2,400 were turned over delinquent after the 2020 taxes, tax year. 786 was forfeited. So, the first year is delinquent, the second year is forfeited, the third year is foreclosed. So, there was 786 in that second year, 45 were foreclosed. And again, you can see, this is a map of the city, and you can see it's, you know, it's all over the city, and this impacts every community in Oakland County. You know, this process impacts every community in Oakland County. Ultimately, 11 went to sale. The most recent data that we have from last year, so this would have been the 2024 foreclosure cycle, with 2021 and prior year taxes, you can see over 2,000 were turned over delinquent on, in, you know, the 2021 taxes in 2022, 764 forfeited, ultimately, five were foreclosed. So, it was the lowest number we've seen in Southfield in, you know, and obviously in my time there, and I think in, that we've had. So, I kind of review this a little bit, the foreclosure process, but again, year one, the delinquency, year two, the forfeiture, year three, the foreclosure. After the foreclosure, so the law, so I was a state rep prior to becoming treasurer, and we actually changed the law here in Michigan. It used to be if you were foreclosed and you lost your property, that was it. Now, there is a process where you can submit a claim form, and you have, you know, you submit the claim form, and then a judge can rule on this, that you're entitled to the surplus proceeds. So, if the taxes, interest, and fees is $10,000, and the house, a property sells for $100,000, that $90,000 is what you're entitled to, if you have an interest in the property. So, that is something that changed here, so that if you are foreclosed, that you can get your interest in the property. Throughout the whole process, over those years, there are tons of notifications. You can see some of them up there. Those are the statutorily required ones. There is first-class mail, priority mail, property visits. We actually visit the property twice and post the property. So, we are doing everything we can to let people know that they owe taxes and try to prevent foreclosure. There's also the, the fees, the interest that's added, that's all listed here as well. I always tell people, our goal, our job in our office is to collect taxes. We are not trying to foreclose on people. That's why I'm out here doing this work, trying to prevent foreclosure, and so we're doing everything we can to do that. So, if you know anyone that owes 2022 and prior year taxes, please make sure that they pay or have them reach out to our office. We do what are called taxpayer assistance meetings. So, those are one-on-one meetings that we do with people to talk about their unique situation and try to help them get, get into a repayment agreement. And we can withhold, obviously, for the foreclosure for that reason. So, I always tell people, we don't know you need help unless you tell us you need help. You need to reach out to us. So, anyone that's listening at home or here, if you do have 2022 and prior year taxes, please reach out to us if you have not already. Again, March 31st is the deadline. We do those taxpayer assistance meetings. We also have in our office the Financial Empowerment Center, which is in essence, like financial coach, who can help you with your, your budget, your bills, you know, trying to get a, a budget put together, any debt, and they also help small businesses who are looking to put a budget together. Rita, who runs that department, does a really great job. The community outreach, so again, this is me, I'm trying to get to as many communities as possible. I'm going to Oak Park right after this one. I was in Holly, I was in West Bloomfield, I was, you know, I'm trying to get to as many. I'm never going to get to all 63, but I try to like change it up every year to try to get to as many communities as possible. But, you know, for all of you, please spread the word. So, a few resources to be aware of. Again, in our office, call our office, the general number is 248-858-0611. If you want to get, again, one of those taxpayer assistance meetings, those direct one-on-one meetings, that Financial Empowerment Center I mentioned, 248-858-0672. Our website, oakgov.com/treasurer. Also, people are, depending on your income, you are, you could be eligible to get a poverty exemption. That is something you have to call, here in Southfield, you have to call the assessor in Southfield to talk through the qualifications and see if you meet those qualifications. Just want people to be aware of that. And then the last one, just to tell you about, is not an entity that is at the county, but it's a group that we work closely with and refer people to. Lakeshore Legal Aid is a free legal service for low-income families and seniors. So, these are attorneys that are volunteering their time. They help with everything but criminal law, criminal cases, and traffic citations, but everything else, I think they handle. So, their number is 888-783-8190. Their website is lakeshorelegalaid.org. This is just kind of an FYI. We've started to, we've actually recorded the videos, and we're in the editing phase right now, videos that are going to help people just to know, a lot of people ask us questions all the time about the tax timeline, about the pop-up. You know, we're trying to just provide information to people in small, short videos that they can watch and learn a little bit more about their property taxes here in Michigan and specifically Oakland County. So, we should have those live, hopefully, sooner than later, and we'll send those over to you when they are. And I think that's it. So, I try to get through it as quickly as I can. I know there's other presentations after, but, you know, what I will encourage all of you, again, if you have not done so already, and you owe 2022 and prior year taxes, or you know someone that does, that's why we're doing the work that we're doing. We're doing everything we can to try to prevent foreclosure, so please reach out to us. You know, after March 31st, there is nothing we can do. The foreclosure deadline passes, there's nothing we can do. It's kind of different, the, almost the opposite, if you will, of a mortgage foreclosure. A mortgage foreclosure happens earlier in the cycle, but then you have a, a window to redeem the property. This is obviously a longer cycle, and we're following state law here. After three years, if you are foreclosed, there's, there is no redemption period. So, that's why we're out here, full-court press, trying to let people know that we're here to help, and that we're not trying to foreclose your house on your property, that we want to help you. So, kind of went through that quickly, so I, I apologize if it was a little too quick for everyone, but if you have any questions or there's anything I can assist you with, please let me know.
Councilman Brightwell?
Robert, that was an excellent presentation. I think everything was kind of, kind of crystal clear.
Thank you.
You indicated that when there's a foreclosure and then there's a sale, the proceeds obviously go to pay taxes and the obligation, and then it goes to the, the owner, the resident, the named owner?
So, anyone that has an interest in the property, right? So, there could be multiple, and sometimes you'll have a lien. And this process is relatively new, right? It's only been around for a few years, because we changed the law. But anyone who has an interest in the property, they have to submit a claim form. So, March 31st is the foreclosure deadline, July 1st is the deadline for them to submit a claim form. We proactively, if a foreclosure does happen, we proactively send people the form to fill out and remind them to submit it by July 1st. So, then anything that is owed, so it's taxes, interest, fees, and whatever maintenance costs, and then that, right, you take that from whatever it sells for, and then that difference is what they're entitled to. And then if there are multiple people who filed the claim, it's a judicial process, so the judge actually rules on it and splits it accordingly.
Okay. That has happened since I've been on council. I remember the court decided.
Yeah, so that just started in '22.
Yeah.
I think it was 20, well, there was no foreclosures in '21. In Oakland, we did a moratorium, but '22, moving forward, is when that started.
And this is just generic question.
Sure.
For my inquisitive mind.
Sure.
You indicated that we have about a million, a million and a half pieces of parcels.
Half a million, half a million parcels in Oakland County.
Oakland County.
Yep.
Yeah. And, and number of foreclosures, how does this compare with other counties, with respect to, that, that number seems relatively low.
It is.
With foreclosures.
It is really low. I've never run it against all 83 counties. You know, there are some counties that are tiny, right? There are some counties that are far smaller than Southfield. They're smaller, some of them are around the size of like Lathrow Village. So, there's, you know, all different sized counties. We are the, the second largest behind Wayne County. We typically, Oakland County pays their taxes on time. 96% of taxes are paid before, you know, they even go delinquent. So, you know, and then the foreclosure number is less than, you know, 1%, obviously. It's, it's a lot less than there, it's less than that. So, our numbers, I would say, were probably lowest foreclosures percentage-wise in the state. I would guess we're up there in the top few.
Okay. Okay. I don't want to keep you here.
No, you're good.
We got a.
Happy to answer questions.
Other presentation, but.
I got a little time. I'm okay. Thank you.
I'll make sure they, my colleagues don't throw me out of here if I keep you here too long. But the inquisitive mind is satisfied. Thank you.
Nice to see you. Yeah, of course.
Mr. Mayor?
Robert, there's been a lot of questions about federal funding and support of things. So, are we seeing any change in the relief money that you use for StepUp for mortgage relief, or rather, tax relief?
Yep.
Any, any change in that program?
Unfortunately, not. So, that program, so there was Step Forward, you were referring to?
Yeah, Step Forward. I would call it StepUp.
No, that's okay. Same idea. There was a federal program called Step Forward that was exhausted just before I got in office. So, I took office 2021. In 2020, they were out of funds. COVID, when COVID happened, the federal COVID relief dollars, so ARPA dollars, went to the states, and MISTDA, the Housing Development Authority here in Michigan, started this program called MIHAF, the Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund, and they could do up to $25,000 per household based on income and based on a COVID impact. $25,000 per, per household, and they can use for their delinquent taxes, mortgage, utility bills, condo association fees, things like that. So, it was up to $25,000 statewide, and we had over $7 million go towards Oakland County taxpayers, property owners for their taxes. That program ended, I'm going to say, at the end of '23, I think it was.
Okay.
So, it's, it's, or maybe the beginning of '24, but that, that program has been exhausted as well. The funds have been exhausted, unfortunately.
So, is there any other funding?
Not that we're aware of. Not yet. No.
Well, obviously, as a city, we're very concerned with the amount of funding that we've received through grants and the trickle-down from federal, federal government.
Yeah.
So, I wondered if it was impacting you, and I, I hear you.
Yep, definitely for that program. I mean, that was a program that was very helpful to Oakland County property owners.
Yeah. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you for an excellent presentation. I know I personally am going to forward this to our Homeowners Association President.
Thank you.
To see if they can get it out to, you know, those in our area, and might not be a bad idea for others to consider. So, excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And to build on that, hopefully, cable will be able to take this one section and have a little, have it running on cable and YouTube, so.
Absolutely.
We can get as much information out there.
I would love that.
So, if our cable director's listening.
And reach out to us, right? If, if you have questions, if you're unsure, just call our office. We're here to help. We have an amazing team that, they're answering the phones and taking people as they walk in. Call us. The information's there. Again, 248-858-0611. You can email me, treasure@oakgov.com. Please know that we are here to help.
So, I do have one last question, unless, does council have any other questions?
All right.
I was just wondering.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, I was just wondering, was this presentation online?
We're going to get it there. We'll get it up there.
Okay.
I know you have a copy here, so I know you'll be able to. Yep.
So, it takes three years to get to this, to the foreclosure point. What happens if someone, let's say, they, they pay all their taxes, and let's say, we'll start '21, they pay their taxes, '22, they don't, '23, they do, '24, they do. What happens that one off-year?
So, it's a great question, but each tax year is independent of the other years. So, and this is state statute, right? So, this year in 2025, anyone that owes 2022 taxes is subject to foreclosure. If their '22s and their '23s are paid off, for example, but they're '21s, they still owe, they are still subject to foreclosure. So, it's any tax year, 2022 and prior, and it can just be one year or multiple years. So, that's why, you know, and occasionally, we've seen that, and those instances are when, you know, and I, I actually visit quite a few of the properties. When we get down to the very end, we do a file review to make sure that we serve them properly, that we, you know, fulfilled all the requirements, legal requirements for notice. And occasionally, if there's a, a unique situation like that, just before the foreclosure deadline, we're going out there and we're saying, what is going on here, right? There's something that's just kind of missing in, in, in your history here. So, you know, try to talk to people about that. So, it's, it is any tax year, three years and prior.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you taking the time to come out and help educate us, as well as our residents and anyone else who can learn from this information and hopefully avoid foreclosure for themselves or for someone they know.
Thank you for having me. Again, reach out to me if you need anything, but I appreciate your time.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
Good to see you all. Yep, thank you.
All right. Our next presentation is from our Oakland County Commissioner, Lenny Taylor. I know our other commissioner, Yolanda Smith Charles, was, was going to hopefully be here as well, but.
Yeah, but that's okay. I'm home.
We appreciate you coming back to your roots.
Hi. Welcome back. It's nice being on this side of the podium. Again, hi, and thank you for allowing me to be here today. My partner is Yolanda Smith Charles, Commissioner, and she should be here, or she's on her way here, but I'll stand in in the meantime. I just need to say thank you to all of you for all the job, the wonderful job that you're doing. I know I don't say it enough. Every time I call, you do answer and respond, so I truly appreciate that. I'm working very hard to represent you at the county. My district is 18, which serves the villages of Franklin, Bingham Farms, Beverly Hills, Southfield Township, portions of Southfield, and portions of West Bloomfield Charter Township. So, that's a lot of places that I have to be, but I, I spend my time very wisely, and I make sure that everyone is taken care of. By that, I mean, just like the nine-mile corridor, I was very instrumental in getting an extra $100,000 for that nine-mile pathway, because I know how important that is, and how when you're walking down there, the bridge, that bridge there, there's just not enough room, and there's cars and pedestrians are just too close. So, Oakland County has approved $100,000 towards that project, just to help with that. And I should also state that I'm on all four standing committees, so when I say that Southfield is really, really represented and your voices are being heard, myself, I'm on all four standing committees, as well as human trafficking. Yolanda is on two of the committees, economic development and our finance, as well as parks and rec. Speaking of parks and rec, we also had $300,000 approved for the Beechwoods project. So, Southfield is definitely becoming very well-known at the county, and when monies come up, they, they look to Yolanda and me, and they're like, okay, what does Southfield need? Not that my other communities don't get represented as well, because they do. I've also included Bingham Farms, Beverly Hills, and some of the drain projects that's going on, and I make sure that they're also represented, but Southfield is home. We also have the workforce development, where there's the emergency, where we provide, where I've asked our fiscal services to give me regular updates on how we, the county, is going to be impacted by the decisions that's being made in the federal government. We want to know ahead of time if there's going to be any funding that's cut and then be prepared for it. So, we're doing that at the county level, and we will definitely let you know at the local level as soon as possible. And again, you also know that Southfield has become partners with the regional human trafficking department. We have a whole new way, we had training that was given to all of the counties. It was open to everyone. Oakland County, our prosecutor's office put on this training for human trafficking to make us aware of how to not just arrest victims, but arrest the people that's actually victimizing these individuals. So, there's new training that has taken place, and it was all free to the local communities. And Southfield has signed on and has a person assigned to the human trafficking, as well as Farmington Hills, Royal Oak, I believe Berkeley as well, the ones that I know of. But I just wanted to say thank you, and we, Yolanda, I'm sorry, Commissioner Smith Charles and myself, will try to come and visit you at least once a quarter and give you any updates and answer any questions or concerns that you may have. But again, feel free to reach out to me at any time, because I always reach out to you when I have a question or a concern, and I'd like for you to do the same. So, thank you for allowing me to speak and be here today, and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Counsel, I almost called you Councilwoman, Commissioner. I wanted to thank you, you know, for years, Oakland County kind of ignored the South End, and for the two projects, Beechwoods and the Nine Line, the county, that's as far south as you can get in the county. So, I just wanted to thank you for your efforts, for the funding for both of these projects. Again, for years, most of the county's energies and resources went to North Oakland, so it's, it's greatly appreciated to see that shift, and it's overdue. So, and we know that you're there fighting for Southfield and other South Oakland County communities. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, they call me the Southfield Ambassador, because every time there's a nickel somewhere, I'm like, let's see if Southfield can use that. Anyone else? It's okay if you don't have questions. That means I'm doing a good job.
Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to ask you, you were talking about the human trafficking. Is there an opportunity that they would be able to do some community awareness to residents to let them sort of be, you know, or bring them, I guess, abreast to that? Because I know in the situation I was in some time ago, I didn't recognize that it was, that was what was happening, and I think that it's out, but most people don't know how to pick it up. So, is there some way, or is there any chance that they would probably bring that to the community?
That is something that's on our radar. We'll be meeting next week, Wednesday, and that's one of the topics. We have to work with the local communities to see how we want to present it.
Okay.
Because we want to make sure that everyone knows it's a partnership, because you need to recognize human trafficking, because it's more, we think of sex trafficking right away, but it's more than that. There's labor trafficking. There's all kinds of human trafficking that's taking place, and we need to be made aware of that, because sometimes you don't realize that the laborer that's out there cutting and, cutting the grass and picking the weeds, that person could be being trafficked, and you don't even know it. But there's a way that we might be able to identify that and offer help to that individual. So, yes, that is something that we are working towards, but we, again, we're unified, so we want to work with the communities to do that.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question.
Councilwoman Banks?
I just want to say thank you for your presentation and also representing Southfield.
Thank you. I'm excited to be there and excited to represent each one of you, as well as our residents. Thank you. If there's no other questions, I'll excuse myself.
Thank you, and you're always welcome to come back home and give us a presentation or just come by and say hello.
Thank you. I sure will. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have two joint resolutions from the mayor and city council.
Our first resolution tonight is one we've done annually. I come from a family with four sisters, so I'm very well-trained when it comes to the power of women. So, I'm, I'm very happy to be here this evening to present this joint resolution on Women's History Month. And every year, the month of March is designated as an opportunity to recognize women's varied and often under-recognized accomplishments throughout American history. And Women's History Month was started as a day in Santa Rosa, California, then became a week in Sonoma County. Anyhow, this took off, and whereas the week of March 8th was celebrated, it was selected to correspond with International Women's Day, we celebrated that, and there was an observance that was held for Oakland County in Birmingham that I, I attended. And whereas the movement spread across the country and the celebrations went from a week to a month, and in 1980, President Jimmy Carter issued the first presidential proclamation declaring the week of March 8th as International Women's History Week, and then in 1986, a number of states began to declare and recognize, as well as the United States Congress, and so. And so each sitting president since 1995 has issued yearly a proclamation honoring the role of American women in history. So now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city councils, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, do hereby proclaim March 1st to 31st, 2025, as Women's History Month in the city of Southfield. And it's dated today and signed by the mayor and council.
Councilman, motion to accept the...
Mr. President? A motion?
I move to accept the presentation on the joint resolution of Women's History Month. Support?
It is moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Hicks, to accept the joint resolution for Women's History Month. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Better not. All right, unless there's other comment on that resolution, we can move on to the next one?
Yep.
All right. So we had a request at our last meeting that we have world, a joint resolution on World Water Day in the city of Southfield, which is March 22nd, 2025. Whereas the International World Water Day is held annually on March 22nd as a means of focusing attention to the importance of fresh water and advocating for sustainable management of fresh water resources. And whereas recommended at the 1992 United Nations Conference on Environment and Development, the United Nations General Assembly responded by designating this date as the first World Water Day. And whereas formalized in 2003, UN Water is the United Nations Inter-Agency Coordination Mechanism for all freshwater-related matters, including sanitation, to meet the complex challenges of climate change, disasters, urbanization, and the effects of sustainable management of water. And whereas one of the United Nations' key objectives is to provide coherent and reliable data, information on key water trends and management of the same. And whereas every year, UN Water coordinates the United Nations Observances of Freshwater Sanitation, and this year's theme, Leaving No One Behind, adapts the promise of 20, by 2030, Agenda for Sustainable Development of Goal Number Six, Crystal Clear Water for All, by 2030. And whereas World Water Day is taking action to tackle water issues today, 2.2 billion people are living without safe water. Many households, schools, workplaces, and factories struggle with drinking water that is contaminated, putting them at risk for serious health issues. So now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council, City of Southfield County, Oakland, State of Michigan, do hereby recognize March 22nd, 2025, as World Water Day in the city of Southfield, and urge all residents to participate in programs and activities that advocate the importance of fresh water resources and the sustainable management thereof. Dated the 17th day of March 2025, signed by the mayor and council.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I propose that we accept the joint resolution for World Water Day as presented.
It's been, may I have a motion by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Hicks, to accept the joint resolution for World Water Day. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kotman, did you, would you like to say a few words? Ms. Kotman, do you want to say a few words? You can come up, since we know that it was your help with the World Water Day.
Am I timed, Mr. President?
Yes.
Yes.
To the resolution on Women's History Month.
You can speak.
I do not accept this in relation to Women's History Month. But I do accept that March 8th is International Women's Day, that we look at Women's History Month the same way we looked at African History Month, but women's rights and women's voices are every day. International Women's Day was founded by workers in the textile industry in New York In human conditions, the women had to pay for the sewing machines themselves. Women died in New York history in the whole issue of women's rights. The city of Southfield has never, ever recognized Women's History Month, but the city of Southfield International Day, 2007, Brenda Lawrence, 2011, Brenda Lawrence, recognized Women's International Day. And we are proposing, in the city of Southfield, to honor the women in the workplace of the city of Southfield. The women all over, in all of the departments, who work Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, every day. We want to honor those women. We want to know what those departments are here. We want to recognize. The city treasurer's office is all women, and elected is here, so where are the men? All we're saying, be, let us know. We want to honor the women in this workplace who have given their time. And lastly, we want to honor the custodians. Five of the custodians in the city of Southfield are women. That is unheard of. Women's rights are human rights, and we want to honor. We want to honor people like Mary Banks, former city clerk, who had been here, and I'll ask her, and she can whisper to me, how many years? How many years? And our newest recruit, our lawyer, the only office that is not located in this building. We want to tell the story. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes? Councilman Cruz?
Yes. I'm very pleased to just have this opportunity, just to say a word personally. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for one. Starting with my mother, and then you go down the line, my school counselor, Doris Walls, at Cast Tech, who lives here in Southfield, Cynthia Clem, Lavorice Mullins, Mary Spangler, I mean, I can go every step, every rung of my life, there's been a woman that pulled me through. And I just want to pay homage to them, because this is real. And of course, my wife, who has been there for me for many years, as friends, and now as mates, we have been through a lot together, and, I mean, I could go on and on, there's more than that. But this is an important month. I'll give you one last tidbit, again, on myself. When I was in college in my master's program, I took a feminist theory course in politics. Opened my eyes up to so much that I never knew and probably never would have known. If you haven't watched the movie, what is it, Six Triple Eight, about all the women in the Army that delivered the mail to all the Army men? I mean, in record time and everything, it's a moving movie out there, and you should really take a look at it, because it shows you exactly what a strong woman can do. And I think all women are strong, stronger than us men sometimes, a lot of times. I know mine is. She's always telling me what to do. It might, it might get on my nerves sometimes, but she's generally always right. But anyhow, I just want to just say that, and like I said, just pay homage to some of the women in my life that I've had, that have really propelled me to even be here today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we move on to the communications portion of our meeting, and before we start, last week, we had a resident who came with a, with an issue she was having with code enforcement that she placed in our Southfield Solutions app, which I encourage everyone to download and use. And she was having trouble getting a resolution, even though there were constant updates. We worked with our code enforcement and then our building department, and we were able to resolve her issue last week Friday. I did speak with her today to let her know that the issue has been resolved. She was very thankful that we were able to get that resolved for her, so hopefully we can continue doing good work for the residents of the city. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employer, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the president officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the president officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the president officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the president officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The council may not provide responses to public comment during the meeting. If you have provided your contact information when you signed up for public communications, the city will provide a more fulsome response to you in the near future. Once communications has completed, if we can, we will try to answer your question this evening. If not, we will take it back and get a response to you as quickly as we can. Each speaker will have three minutes, and I ask that the audience have respect for each speaker. Our first speaker is Stacy Jackson.
I was coming here today, actually, with a few questions. In last week's city council committee of the whole, there was mention of there being issues with water systems, where the city was trying to have property owners or property managers of large multifamily units held to account after 10 years of trying to track them down for it. It was stated that nearly 17,000 Southfield residents could potentially be impacted with water shut-offs. I would like to have more information on that, because I'm not sure if you recall in October 2024, when renters came here before you to express some of these concerns with water backups, literally raw sewage coming up through kitchen sinks and bathtubs and toilets. And rather than hearing that, it was more so painted as a narrative as if somehow the residents themselves were the cause of these uncertain circumstances. I'm concerned that the city is not doing enough to handle business. The fact that anyone can go 10 years not being held in account, being non-compliant to something as critical as apartment complexes with thousands of residents is disturbing. It's equally as disturbing as it taking two decades to handle the sewer line issues that many of your residents are dealing with. What I learned last week was that our infrastructure issues here in Southfield are deeper and more serious than I even imagined. What else can we do as a community and a city to hold these people to account? The residents cannot be impacted. Shutting off a resident's water is not an option. It is not an option. So what else can we do? Is there something we can do to soothe these property owners? And I'm not just talking about our city attorney, I'm talking about those attorneys that we actually pay top dollar for, the Butzel Longs, the Miller Canfields. What are we going to do about these backflow interrupters or inverters that these residents need? Shutting off nearly 17,000 residents' water is not an option. Think about how we handle our business and do more to protect your residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alicia Clayburn.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm a resident here of the city of Southfield for over 25 years, and my concern today, and I submitted documentation, is the fence that lines Webster and Pierce. This fence is highly unsafe. When we talk about human trafficking and labor trafficking, I'm concerned about that, Councilman Banks, because for one, the school bus drops off our students right at that corner. That fence is, some parts are falling down, it's propped up with two-by-fours. We are risking the, not only human trafficking issues, because someone can grab a student so quick, just like that, or have them forced into the backs of people's backyards. That's unsafe. The other issue with this fence is that lead poisoning. This fence was built prior to 1978. I'm concerned... I'm concerned about the chipping paint of this fence and how it may be impacting our children who are residents also of the city of Southfield. Let's talk about the endangerment as it relates to animals, fox, wolves, that are nearing that Bedford Park area and how that may be impeding on the safety of these children. Because again, these, this fence is not upright. It's constantly being repaired. We're wasting residents' tax dollars on wages of, for employees to constantly repair this on a quarterly basis, as opposed to just ripping it all and putting in a brand new fence to line that Webster street. I am appalled to know that my taxes have increased because you all have said that my own home is, is, is more than what it's worth. Yet I have to face this fence issue and the street, the pavement. I've also submitted documentation of the actual street of Webster and all the potholes that are there. That needs to be cut out in a section and then re-asphalated properly as to not create hazard to children, hazard to roads and people who are driving. Because when it's big potholes and it's iced out over, you cannot see, and then there is an issue, several issues, not to mention the cost to residents who have to repair their tires constantly because of these holes. These trees are growing in between these, this, this fence, these fence linings. And let me add to, to this. This not only goes against the city of Southfield ordinance, which states that your fence, your backyard fence must not be higher than six feet. This fence, Councilman Haynes, is more than six feet and it is deplorable. Not to mention that the, this fence is not only violation of the city ordinance, but the state of Michigan ordinance as well, Code 434. And so-
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I think she had pictures. Did you turn in your pictures?
Yes, I, I submitted them, uh, to City Clerk Jackson.
Yes, Ms. Lake, them. I, um, scanned them and they will be emailed to you, um, council members, mayor and administrator tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Keeler, resident of Southfield. About a month ago, a question was raised about a town hall meeting. Some of the people up in front of me said, no. My question is why are you afraid to speak to residents? But you will ask them to vote for you. Now, the mayor told you there was no town hall on the septic tanks. It was a forum. Here's a piece of paper that shows it was a forum. So there's never any meeting or discussion with residents. It was a forum. That's it. We just asked to meet with you. Now you have people now coming up here before you, basically saying the same thing. Can we have a conversation? That's all they asked them for, a conversation. What are you afraid of a conversation about? The other thing I would say, even what everybody's talking about, I got a letter about a month ago about painting my shed in the backyard. It's winter. We ain't even made it to spring. The temperature has to be so high in order for paint to adhere or to work. Why am I getting a violation? Talking about $500 fine. It makes no, absolutely no sense. And then if you're talking about a tree trunk that's 11 inches round that you won't pick up, that's just standing up on the side, which somebody has decorating their driveway. I just have the stumps in my yard. How can you call them firewood? 12 inch round wood, unless you break it up, it will not become firewood. It is a stump sitting on the ground, which I see all over the place, which I don't see a problem with that once again. But, you know, this makes no sense in snow and ice. And then as that stump has been sitting there, what makes you think as it's breaking back down in the ground? And you had a woman here talking about sustainability? If I break it up, that's more carbon than outside. There goes your CO record. Somebody takes it away, there goes your CO record higher and higher. Even after explaining this to the code enforcement person, they did not understand this. So how are you trying to be sustainable? Break down, that's why I got stuff growing in my backyard that doesn't grow other places because of the woods and trees and leaves and everything else that break down and make my soil rich. So it would be nice to have some code where you kind of understand how things work and how they work better and how you do keep with the emission program, like the one guy that was doing the compost who got rolled up because he was composting and then the lady came in there and talked about composting.
Your time is up.
Makes no sense. Make something that's clear.
Thank you. And our last speaker is, is Keith Harris.
How you doing today? I'm hoping y'all noticed in our audience, we have a more younger, diverse audience behind us today. And I'm glad they're here to see how the politics of Southfield really work. Now, um, I want to talk about people who are renting. We got some apartment owners in this city where some of our renters are rent, their homes are backing up. This is what we're finding in people's kitchen sinks and bathrooms, feces. This is real. Now, if my septic tank back up, guess what I get? I get a notice. I get this saying my home is condemned. Guess what else you get when your water bill, a notice to lane? This is just a notice to lane for $125, but you got renters out here with 10, $15,000 bills? Come on, people. Come on. This council, this city gotta do better. Cause you're making yourself look bad all over the country. We got, you know, we got this thing we're doing here in Southfield. Matter of fact, all over the state, it's called rebuild the dams. We trying to get rid of these dynos because we looking for new minds, like that young man that was up here talking about taxes. I love that guy. You can ask him a question, he don't evade, he don't run. He's nothing like Andy Meiser. I love young men and young people who are stepping into this new politics arena. But what we got to do in this city is change. We can't just sit here and talk about, uh, uh, for, putting a notice on people's houses when you got apartment buildings out here. Where I'm talking about feces is from the ground floor to the top floor. You walk into the building and you walk around the building, when you walk out of the building, your clothes smell. I'm, I'm serious. I should have put some Vic Sab in my nose before I walked into the building. It's almost like finding a dead body. This is infection control, what's going on? Southfield is a democratic city. And you know what? Our own local government don't want to hear the issues. We can't just keep praying for better. We got to do better. We praying and we got the faith of a mustard seed, but do y'all have any faith in our vote, knowing that we can vote y'all out of here? I'm telling you, enough is enough. We got our eyes on you.
Thank you. That concludes communications. Um, just to answer some of the questions, last week, there was a presentation about water. There was some discussion about apartment complexes, um, with some of the backflow prevention. However, Southfield will not, does not currently shut off water. Our neighborhood services subcommittee will be reviewing this policy with our Department of Public Works, with our city administration to make sure that we work with these apartment complexes and, as well as those living in those apartment complexes to, uh, ensure that everyone is notified of the issues that are going on and they can, well, we can work together with those, with the owners, with the residents, with the tenants, to make sure that the inspections that we need to ensure that the wa, clean water for all of Southfield is being maintained. And I'll skip to the, the last speaker talked about same issue with, with water issues in some of these rental properties with sewage. If a rental property, whether it's a home or an apartment, is having an issue and the landlord is not taking their complaint seriously or not fixing it, you can reach out to our building department. They maintain and do ru, routine inspections of homes and apartments and they can be reached at 248-796-4100. And you can mention that you have an issue as a renter, whether it's a, again, a home or a apartment complex, townhome, whatever you may be renting, if you're having issues, our building department is more than happy to step in and conduct an inspection and make sure that it is fixed to the, uh, proper code and standard that it needs to be. We had, uh, another resident spoke about the intersection of Pierce and Webster regarding fencing and the street. I know that the fencing is something that the mayor is working on in next year's budget. Um, I don't know if this is a city fence or a private fence.
Um, she, she left because I was going to ask her, is it on city property? I'm not aware that we have a, a, a city fence at that intersection.
Right. So we'll have to look at the pictures we get tomorrow. I did pull up Google Maps. It looks like the standard city fencing that we have like along 10 mile. I just don't know where the property line is, but we'll have to, uh, take a look and see what we can do. And the, you know, the street, um, there were potholes. We will talk to our, again, our DPW crew, see if they can fill the potholes and talk to our city engineer to see if that street is on the list to be repaired, um, in the, in the future. And then we also had a speaker who talked about some code enforcement violations about paint and wood. Um, obviously, we don't have the complaint in front of us, but, uh, we will reach out to our code enforcement department tomorrow and find out, get more details about what the violations and complaint are and work with that resident to ensure compliance and, um, hopefully to everyone's satisfaction. All right. Thank you, council. Next, we move on to our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered routine, non-controversial, or have previously been discussed. We have 12 items. Does any item, does any council member have an item they wish to be pulled?
Item G.
Item G. Okay. Council, any other items?
No.
I'm sorry? No, okay. Um, you want to ask your question now, sir?
Yeah.
This is the, wait a minute, this is the extension of the irrigation system maintenance.
Yeah, in reading through this, I wanted to find out, um, what is the start date on this particular item? I, it was, it was difficult for me to understand what was the start date.
So the original, um, contract was approved on, uh, May 1st. So that's the, that's the current expiration date is at the end, at, at the beginning of May, but we're looking to all, to move the start date to April 1st because the season starts in, in, really in mid-April and we'd like to get the contract start date before that, before the season.
You, you say, when, did this start, when April? Uh, when did it start?
May 1st of 2024. So this was, uh, the previous extension was May 1st of 2024.
Okay, that's, this is why it was on, I see something as May 1, 2023, and, uh, it was just-
So, sorry, the 2023, that's the original, um, authorization? And then there was an ex, uh, one extension. Uh, the first extension's already been exercised last year. So now it's expiring May 1st of 2025.
Okay. Okay, well, I want to commend, uh, Mrs. Zorn in his staff for, uh, in reading through is about three, about three contracts here that were brought forward early, you know, when they should be. And this has been something I've been concerned about since I've been on council. Uh, but this is, this one here just, it, it automatically watch these, these contract renewals because of, you know, opportunities. And I just want to commend, I was going to commend the, uh, Mr. Zorn and his staff because there's three in here that were caught early, which is, which is a good thing. The Microsoft, the, uh, Co, Ghost Star, and this one seemed, seemed to have been caught, you know, um, before they expired. And that's been, since I've been on council, we, well, anyway, uh, this is more of a compliment than, than just clarification of the, the dates that I was reading, so. That's it? So I'm fine.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I move that we approve consent agenda item A, information of Microsoft volume licensing agreement renewal. B, proposed amendment to resolution 2022 dot 222, revised procedure for the sale of vacant parcels. C, approval of cross-participation agreement for Greenfield Road resurfacing from 12 mile road to 13 mile road. D, transformational Brownfield Plan, Middle Point Investment Group. E, CoStar database contract renewal. F, authorization to purchase two vehicles for Parks and Recs Park Services. G, extension of irrigation system maintenance contract with Michigan Automatic Sprinkler. H, reimbursement agreement with the road commissioner for, commission for Oakland County for 2025 street sweeping services. I, authorization to purchase light towers for water and sewer. J, purchase of autonomous floor scrubber. K, facility maintenance budget amendment. And lastly, L, purchase of carpet cleaner.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Ho, supported by Councilman Haynes, to approve consent agenda items A through L. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. And I just want to point out for the listening audience, one of the items we approved tonight is, um, a cost participation for Oakland County to spend, uh, to, to work on Greenfield Road between 12 and 13 mile. They're going to be doing a resurfacing. The total project is $3 million. Southfield is only paying $50,000 of that project. It does span a few different cities, but out of a $3 million project, Southfield's share is only $50,000 due to a, a number of federal programs and funds and, as well as from the county. So, um, 12 mile to 13 mile on Greenfield Road will be under construction this summer, so please plan accordingly. But it's always good when, um, Southfield's share of these projects are on the lower end. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I move the, we enact ordinance number 1807.
Support. It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, to enact ordinance number 1807. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I- I move that we enact ordinance number 1808.
Support. It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Hicks, to enact ordinance number 1808. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the travel expense for Cora de Hoog for the MML meeting, January 20th through 21st.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve the travel expense report for Councilwoman Hoog. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Mr. Brightwell, do you have any comments for this evening?
No.
Councilwoman Haynes?
Yes, I do. Just wanted to make the public aware that this Wednesday at the Southfield Public Library, there is a jazz and blues, unique celebration this time. It would be a Mardi Gras celebration. So, all the details are on the Southfield Public Library's website. There is an admission cost for that, so look that up. It's going to be a real nice celebration. The proceeds from the jazz and blues, 100% of the proceeds go to support programming at the library. The Friends is the nonprofit organization that supplies the library with lots of material that they normally would not be able to afford. So, just go out and support the library and have a good time. And Mardi Gras just passed in Louisiana. I know because I used to live there, and it's really fun. But this is their own celebration. It's going to be a wonderful time. And I did want to kind of emphasize a little bit about Women's History Month, and I think it's real important, and what Dr. Cruz just said about women and what we do as women. But I just want to celebrate all women in the sense that there are those that don't have nine-to-five jobs. There are mothers and grandmothers and aunties that are raising children that have stayed home just to do just those things. And sometimes those women get overlooked because they don't have a nine-to-five, or they're not professionals. But those are the people that care for these young ones, that make leaders, these great leaders that we have today. And in addition to that, just celebrating the diversity of all women, of all races, and all the things that we do to support others, to help others. And in this acknowledgement of Women's History Month, it's just good to know that there are people that do care and that we celebrate each other as women and support each other. And there is one quote that I did read that I really liked, that I can, I hope I can pronounce her name right, it's Chimamanda Ngozi Adichie. And she said, "I have chosen to no longer be apologetic for my femaleness and my femininity, and I want to be respected in all my femaleness because I deserve to be." And I'd like to say, women deserve to be respected. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes. Well, Ms. Haynes just decided a very nice piece, so I'll just add on to it and say, ain't I a woman? So, journey truth. But I was just gonna say, Happy St. Patrick's Day as well to everyone. It's the day of the feast. It's the day to celebrate. As you can see, I adorned myself with not only my green, but as well as my rosary beads. So, for those who didn't know, which you probably wouldn't, I am part Irish and I am Catholic, even though I was raised Baptist. Don't get me wrong. I was raised Baptist, but you know, when I got of age, I began to, to practice in that faith. And so, it's, I just wanted to reach out. The thing I was gonna say about these beads here is, real quick, it's not the beads more so than it is the clover leaf. It was, it has, it was a way of St. Patrick to teach about God. And so, you have these three little leaves that stand for the Father, the Son, and the Holy Ghost. And I, you know, it's like, when I heard it for the first time, I was like, really? I thought it was just something you just threw on to go out and have a drink, to be honest. And, you know, the more that I, you know, learned some more things and whatnot, but that's really what it was for. And so, that's something meaningful to me. And, you know, no matter what religion you do subscribe to, generally, that is something that's fairly universal. I'll just say fairly universal. And anyhow, but anyhow, I hope you all have a good evening. Maybe I will go somewhere after I leave here, but otherwise, I'm all good. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Hicks?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I also would like to say, Happy St. Patrick's Day to everyone. Hope everyone enjoyed their green eggs, corned beef, and green shakes today. Also, to my colleague, Councilwoman Haynes, my mother, who was a stay-at-home mother, she called herself a household technician. She said, "If everyone else can have a title, that is my title." And she goes, "And I won't even tell you what I get paid, but I am a household technician." So, Mom, I'll always remember that. To our city administrator, is there a way we can get a report on the fences that the city has, like, along some of the mile roads? I know we've talked about it for several years. I thought it was brought up at Neighborhood Services several years ago, and we were gonna address it, but I just don't know what the status is. So, at your convenience, if you could just inform council. And then also, tonight, under the consent agenda to the city administrator, we set a public hearing date for the Middle Point project. I cannot open the file. I've talked to the IS director. It's too large. So, can we please make sure that it's either cut down into four sections? For those of us who can't open that, even our IS director was a little puzzled why it wasn't working, and they don't have an old iPad. So, thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Hope?
I was waiting for my, okay, thank you. I echo everything that my colleagues have said, so I'll just stick to something new. We were able and honored to be a part of the school district, state of the district. Superintendent Green gave an excellent presentation, so kudos to the superintendent and the board. Got some great information to see the success that our school system has, and I know there's other opportunities for the public to view it. I encourage you all. And then, just on a personal note, I'll take a privilege to say happy birthday to my beautiful sister, Melinda. She's watching. And my great nephew, Khalil Cowell, in Alabama. So, I'll call him and tell his parents to go on here and see that I wished him a happy birthday. So, that's all. Thank you for everyone who came. You know, I want to thank those who come out. Not everybody come up and get up here and say anything, but we just appreciate you all coming and getting to know the process. And, you know, afterwards, if you feel like you want to talk to us, just feel free to, especially today, we're getting out early. Let us know. But I do appreciate everyone coming out. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
The, the audience wants to know if you're gonna be singing happy birthday to your sister and nephew.
I already did.
All right. Just a couple other announcements that the, Southfield will be hosting a daddy-daughter dance Saturday, March 22nd this week from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. You can get tickets and more information by, at the Parks and Rec information desk or by calling 248-796-4620. Also, with Parks and Rec, the, Southfield puts on a great program for Black History Month, and their Southfield Celebrates Black History Month 2024 program has been honored with the Innovative Recreation Program Award by M. Parks. This award recognizes outstanding programs that makes a lasting impact on Parks and Recreation in Michigan, and we couldn't be more thrilled to be acknowledged. And the award was presented to them at, at the M. Parks Elevate Conference and Trade Show in Grand Traverse Resort. And so, thank you very much to all of our Parks and Rec staff that put together a month of great programming and information, and the fact that we won an award for it is even more incredible. So, thank you very much to our staff for that. Other than that, again, like everyone else said, it is Women's Month, and, you know, we wouldn't be here without our, without our mothers. And also, thank you to all of the, the women in Southfield, especially the women who take their time to sit up here and, and take, take out of their family lives and their time to help the, all the residents of the city. So, thank you. We appreciate you. With that, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
I want to yield my time, and I'm wondering if one of the young people that's in the audience might come up and tell us where you're from. I assume you're observing government in action. So, can I get a volunteer to come to the microphone?
The young lady with the white jacket on, she looks like she's ready to come up.
Come on.
Come on. Don't be shy.
Extra credit, maybe?
Just come all, just come all together and one person talk.
Yeah, that's true. She's coming.
Y'all can all come and support her, or just stand with her.
Do I have to come over and get you?
Let's get one on each side. Come on with her. You're almost up. Stand up. Yes. Ladies first. Just kidding. Just kidding.
Hello. I'm Alice Thompson. And, oh, sorry. I'm Alice Thompson, and I'm with, we're a student group, and we've been going to apartments in Southfield and talking to renters about some of the rent hikes and fees and issues with conditions and maintenance in the buildings. And we're here to sort of observe Southfield City Council and learn more about how Southfield local government works, and yeah.
And what grade are you in?
Soph, sophomore.
Okay. Well, welcome.
My name's Toby. I'm with Alice.
Welcome, Toby.
Thank, thank you for being here. And if you, do you have any questions, as Councilwoman Hoog mentioned, you know, feel free, after the meeting is over, we usually stick around for a little while in case anyone has questions for us.
Thank you for coming.
And thank you for being brave enough to come to the mic.
Totally.
All right. City Administrator?
I just, excuse me, the Councilwoman Banks commented on the file size of the Middle Point. It is in excess of 400 pages. What we've, what I'm learning is, it opens all right on regular computers, but on tablets, for some reason, we're having a difficult time opening it. It's much larger. Most of our plans are usually 35 to 50 pages. So, we, we will break the, we'll break the PDF into smaller quantities as it goes out. I will simply say that it's a plan that brings in over 133 million in tax incentives to back to the city of Southfield. So, I'm pretty excited about that. I did want to comment on the backflow prevention. The conversation was about the backflow preventers for water. Just want to make sure that there is no such device, backflow preventers for sewage. If there's a back, backup in a sewage system, it's usually a private function, but as Council President has said, if there's a problem with someone's sewage, they need to immediately call the building department. You know, and if it's inside your building, if it's inside your building, the private section is from the city line, usually at the street, to where it ever comes across that property and in that building. I will check with the building department. It's not something, we get a lot of, I'm not aware in 16 years, actually, one complaint in 16 years where there was a sewage, and we found out on a Friday night before Thanksgiving, and the building department immediately took action, and the city attorney will, can tell you, we were even in court the following week. So, we know when, when the, you know, something that happens, notify the building department. Now, on the backflow preventing conversation, this is a challenge across the country, making sure that these systems, these backflow laws are relatively new, and the enforcement. And in a lot of places, the reaction is, turn the water off. Because here in Southfield, we don't turn water off, we need to find a heavier hammer on these property owners. And that's the discussion that will be in front of our legislative committees. What is the appropriate hammer? But let me also say this, the proposed rollback of the EPA regulations, this is one that gets rolled back. But this is about protecting our water supply. We are, in most places in the city, we're getting very good compliance with our commercial properties. The apartment properties are being classified as commercial properties. That's the other part of this. So, our conversation with city council is going to be about, what's the heavier hammer? How do we go after these properties owners who are not in compliance with the requirement from back, on the backflow preventers? So, relatively new law in the last five years, getting compliance is a challenge. Most places are taking the position, you don't comply, you turn off the water. But because it's a multifamily residential situation, that's not our position. So, we continue to send letters and communications. We're looking at what the next strategy, and that has been referred to a council committee. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Yes, good evening, counsel. I have nothing further to add tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Good evening, counsel, and listening, watching audiences. I just want to say, go Pistons.
All right. Sorry, planner's not here, but business development, did you have anything you'd like to add this evening?
Well, I did have one printed copy of the plan that Councilwoman Banks was speaking of, and I would be happy to run up and make some additional copies. The plan that was sent to everybody includes the entire comprehensive master plan of the city, which is the appendix, which I think is causing the biggest problem of downloading. And this, I did not print it off as part of this, but I think I did go upstairs and make a copy. And I have no chance.
Okay. If anyone needs a copy, they'll, they'll let you know.
It's a new copy, is it, or?
No, no, it's the same one. But if you couldn't, if you couldn't download it, Shelley's happy to make you a copy.
Oh, that's a book, 400 pages. That's a lot of trees.
All right. Anything else? Anything from our building official?
I have nothing. I just have to.
All right. Thank you very much. Other than that, nothing else to come before us, meeting is adjourned.